I really appreciate your patience. Welcome to the Ferrodi Central School Board of Education. Actually, we have a special meeting that we're going to start with, budget hearing. And so, we will start with the pledge, though, if everyone would be so kind as to stand and salute the flag. And I pledge allegiance to the flag from the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, sir. So, we have a proposed agenda. Thanks, Ms. Slidell, for the special district meeting and budget hearing for tonight. Who could bring that to the floor for consideration? So, that would be Mr. Hawk and Mr. Forster as a second. And any petitions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That's approved. And we're going to go right into our budget hearing. We're going to go right into our regular meeting as well. So, thanks, everyone. Appreciate your participative patience. Okay. So, first, we have to review the required annual meeting documents. And all of us and all of you should have received an official notice for the papers. Mr. Surtisio, anything that we need to be aware of beyond what we already received?
No, sir.
And then, we also had the qualifications of voters. Mr. Surtisio, anything relative to that that we need to be especially aware of?
No, sir. It's all standard language.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody have any questions about either of those documents? Okay. Then, this is our opportunity to hear a presentation of the tentative budget that the board previously approved. And we start with the proposed budget summary, tax rate section, and Mr. John Forbes. Excellent.
This presentation will be updated to reflect the changes that the Board of Education made when they adopted the budget. That night, you did not have an opportunity to see all the numbers as they changed as we got through. That'll be what you see in today's presentation. So, salary benefits were up 1.4 percent for $399,000. In the instructional side, we're up $2.36 percent. Non-instructional, $46,000 or 1.95 percent. And the benefits, which we'll see a distribution of those in a second, were up 0.77 percent or $50,000. In the proposed budget, you have retirements of five teachers. There are replacements for all five positions. And you also have four of the five eligible for the teacher's contract incentive. So, that's included in this proposed budget. We also added new staffing, three positions for the middle school, two potential overages, seven through 12, teaching assistant, which is part of the changes that'll be taking place with the middle school program, and a position in the business office. Terms of benefits, the big ticket is New York State Teachers Retirement System. We're up 10 percent. That's a change in rate from 9.8 percent for 1819 to 10.62 percent for 1920. The good news is that the projections for the following year, 2021, are going back down to 8.86 percent. So, we should see a corresponding deduction next year in the budget presentation. We also have a decrease in group health insurance, negative 3.2 percent, which is reflective of, one, a low rate on the Chautauqua County School District Medical Health Plan rates this year, and, two, the savings that we received by switching out of the independent health plans for current school year. Equipment, materials, and supplies overall were showing a decrease of $41,000 or negative 4.4 percent. In equipment, we're up 10.3, which is a $16,000 increase. That includes $15,000 towards our music program, about $17,000 worth of tables and chairs for the art department, and a request from the maintenance department to change out the tractor. Also, material supplies district-wide, here a decrease of $58,000 or negative 7.5 percent. Contractual expense in BOSI services, you're down $96,000 or negative 1.49 percent. On the contractual services side, we're up $32,000. On the BOSI side, we're down $128,000. Debt service and interfund transfers, this is your principal and interest on the long-term debt. We're showing a decrease of $2.3 million, which is a reflection of Vision 2000 coming off the books, and there's corresponding change on the revenue side as well. Interfund transfers, $15,000, we've kept the same, which is transfers to our federal special aid fund to cover the portion that's not aided from St. Mary's students. Revenue sources, our state aid, as I mentioned a moment ago, we're down $2.2 million, which is a reflection of decrease paid on Division 2000. Our local sources, we've budgeted an increase of $6,038, which is reflective of improvements in interest rates and the fact that we're now able to invest in certificates and T-bills, which we had the last number of years because the rates were so low. We also changed the projected Medicare reimbursement from $60,000 to $90,000. And in the appropriate fund balance, we added a one-time expenditure, which I'll mention in a moment. Tax levy, as the board approved last time, would be a 0 percent increase over 2018-19. So, in summary, you can see that the budget has gone from $32,441 to $30,306, a decrease of 2.1 million. Again, the bulk of that decrease is the change in debt service. On the bottom half, you can see the same corresponding information for the revenue side. You've got state aid, local sources, one ounce of tax levy, and that's $30,306,737. If the budget's defeated twice by the voters, the district would still need to comply with the administrative cap. Currently, $188,000 under that, 13.75 percent. If the district wanted to exceed the levy limit, which you're not, you would need a 60 percent majority. If the budget's defeated twice, you would need a 0 percent levy increase, which we're already at. In terms of the tax cap, this is a calculation of what you could've done. Maximum tax levy cap would be $16,533. The district opted to go with a tax levy of $16,59,000. So, you are $473,000 below your available cap, and you are in full compliance with the legislative regulations. As I mentioned a moment ago, we do have a one-time expense within this proposed budget, which is a digital math series for grades six through into middle school. We also have in this budget a $100,000 capital outlay project, which would include additional repointing, masonry work at the Main Street campus, new LED outside lighting for the parking lots, and building exterior, new lighting in the high school courtyard, secondary waterline, which will go from the old middle school wing to the new middle school inside, interior signage upgrades, which will reflect the changes that we make into our building, and the required New York State architectural feat. Comparative data, budget to budget, you can see that for 1920, we're proposing a negative 6.58 percent budget. Our seven-year average increase is 1.23 percent, and our three-year average increase is a negative .55. Terms of the tax levy limit, I've listed for you the years beginning with the last pre-limit year of 2011, '12, and then each other year since then. In four of the eight tax levy limit years, you've chosen to go below what you were able to do, including this year where you have 0 percent as opposed to a limit maximum of 2.95 percent. And then, taking a look at that in terms of comparison with your levy, you have a three-year average increase of .95 percent and a seven-year average increase of 1.33 percent. In terms of your tax rate, we're estimating, obviously, zero off of this proposed budget. And just to show you, when it was last year, you had a budget voted in the town of Pompano as an example of $1.82, and the final levy was $2.15. Now, one of the things that I think I had mentioned at the time the board approved the proposed budget is this reflects where we stand today. It does not reflect final legalization rates or final assessed values, which you would have in August when you do the levy. So, at that time, we'll have to see how that flows. And your total levy won't change. It'll still be in the numbers that you're at now. The question will be what will your raise in each town be, and the board will have to make a choice on how you want to handle that when we get there.
And then, okay. Any questions by board members at this point? Oh, it's bad. Mr. Forbes, thanks so much. I really appreciate that.
Okay. Mike, I don't have any questions, but I would just like to thank John for all the work you've put into this. I know that it was challenging at times, and I know that we put some pretty lofty expectations behind it.
I'm fair on this.
But I thank you for that. I thank you, Jeff. I think that you've helped in this process, the audit committee, and the whole board. I'm very appreciative of putting together this budget. I support it fully.
Thanks, Mr. Aldrich. Anyone else wish to have any questions or comments at this point? Okay. Then, the board is allowed this time to hear questions from the public on the proposed 2019-2020 budget. Individuals or groups will be asked to limit their comments to five minutes or less. If you could identify yourself, provide your address, if you're a resident, we'd appreciate it. So, this is the opportunity to talk to all of us about the proposed 2019-2020 budget. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board regarding that? Okay. If not, I'll close that. Then, have a report, Mr. Surtisio, on items to be voted upon at the special minimum of voters. No, go ahead.
Well, the basic budget of $30,306,737 is just described by Mr. Forbes would be voted on. There's also a proposal to establish a capital improvement reserve fund to a maximum of $750,000. That's a reserve that will be used for, if approved, for future projects, capital projects. And the life of the reserve is for 10 years. The board has 10 years to fund that reserve as well. It's a good way to utilize positive fiscal times to offset future additional capital costs. Also, I receive Board of Education elections. This election's for two five-year full terms of office. Mrs. Lisa Paul-Fortna and Mr. R. Thomas Hawk are running for these positions.
Thanks so much. So, we have the propositions, the proposed propositions to be used in the voting machines. And so, we would need to approve those propositions for that purpose. So, could we bring those to the floor for consideration?
Yes.
Mr. Aldrich, is there a second to that?
Second.
Ms. Gaginchatz, and is there any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Excellent. Then, we need to recess our special district meeting until May 21, 2019, at 2:00 p.m., and then it would be the time when the polls open, and they will be open from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. So, we would be adjourning then, or recessing, excuse me, until the special district meeting on May 21 at 2:00 p.m. with a motion and the action on that. Mr. Aldrich, is there a second to that? Ms. Paul-Fortna, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Excellent. We're recessed then, and we're going to move right to our Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, May 14, 2019. We'll dispense with the pledge to the flag because we've already done that. The board has reserved this time to hear comments from the audience. Those wishing to address the board are asked to stand, give their name and address, limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual or group. Concerns and comments during this session should be directly related to items listed on the proposed agenda for this meeting. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet and return that to Ms. Slidell, who normally sits at the back of the table. That'd be great. Then, there is an opportunity at the conclusion of the meeting to address the board on any issue. So, does anyone wish to address the board at this time regarding anything on our agenda? Okay. If not, then I'll close that. There would be an opportunity at the conclusion then, and that could be on anything. Then, we have a proposed agenda, and that's the agenda for our regular meeting tonight. There are copies at the back of the library if you don't have one. Now, included in this is the adoption of the consent agenda for line items, Roman numeral seven, personnel, and eight, new business. Adoption of the consent agenda upon a motion and a second and an affirmative vote by members present approves each and every item so designated. However, prior to the adoption of the consent agenda, any board member may remove any item from the consent agenda. This item will then come up for discussion as part of the regular agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite routine matters so that the board has more time to deal with substantive matters. So, with that, if we could bring this to the floor for consideration? Mr. Hawk, and is there a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Forster, and, okay. So, relative to Roman numeral, excuse me, Roman numeral seven, personnel, anyone wish to pull anything out of personnel? Okay. Then, relative to Roman numeral eight, new business, anyone wish to pull anything out of Roman numeral eight? Excellent. Okay. So, then, relative to the proposed agenda, moved by Mr. Hawk, seconded by Mr. Forster, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So, that's approved, and that takes us right now to Roman numeral four, and that's special presentations, and Mr. Pashke.
It is an honor to introduce Mrs. Depew for her presentation on her internship program. It is an exciting program. It gets a lot of kids involved at our school and opportunities in our local community to actually do jobs that they might be doing in their future. So, I'm not going to take anything away from her presentation. So, please, please start. I'm excited. It looks good.
Well, thank you for allowing us to come in and talk a little bit about our internship program. And as Mr. Pashke said, my name is Laura Depew. I'm a business teacher and also the internship coordinator for our students. So, our main goal is for our students to be able to gain some real-world experience before going off into the career world or college or military, just to give them some hands-on experience to see what working is all about. Just a little bit of information, we are now the Career Exploration Internship Program, and it is a New York State Registered Program, and that is new starting this year. Our program is offered both in the fall and the spring semesters and for juniors and seniors only. Students who want to get involved usually start with signing up in their guidance department like they would any class, and then filling out all the paperwork with me. Some of that would include the application introduction paper, the confidentiality statements, and the training agreements. Once that's all done and we know what the students are interested in, we find a placement for them, and they work with a mentor or mentors, depending on where they go. And again, depending on the placement, students either do actual work and complete things that need to be done, or they observe others doing work. So, depending on the type of career, we have had students in hospital and medical offices who obviously can't do real work, but they're mostly learning by watching and asking questions and seeing how it's done. Students do earn a half a credit towards graduation and a satisfactory grade once everything is completed. This is unpaid. They do get credit, but no pay. So, statistics for this year, we had first semester, 12 students, 10 seniors, 2 juniors, and then second semester, 21 students, 12 seniors and 9 juniors, for a total of 33 students who participated this year. Some of their responsibilities, but not all, obviously, after they complete their paperwork, students are required to intern weekly, usually about four hours a week, and every student's schedule is different, depending on where they go, their free time during the day. Some students only do nights, weekends. Everybody's a little bit different. Students fill out time cards, have them signed by their mentors weekly. They complete their journal entries each week, basically a summary of what they've done for the week, and they turn that in through Google Classroom. There's many assignments that they complete throughout the semester, such as they interview their mentor, they do a resume informational flyer about their experience at a certain point, and then they do fill out a career plan. At the end, they do their final presentation about the actual career and the experience and a little bit about their mentor that they learned from interviewing them. Obviously, they have to maintain confidentiality at all times and professionalism throughout. Some of their benefits, they get to make informed career decisions, and sometimes that's deciding this is not for me. And I've had students within two weeks say, I thought for my whole life I wanted to do this, and I, after two weeks of just watching, I can't, no, I can't do this. So, they move on to something else. And I think that's exciting. It sounds negative, but it's great because then, you know, they didn't go to college for four years or eight years and think they're going to do one thing and then decide they didn't actually like to do that. Builds employment qualifications, gives students opportunities to get firsthand experience within a career. They gain industry training, develop marketable workplace skills, soft skills. They learn positive attitude, dependability, leadership, communication. Sometimes it leads to future employment opportunities. I have had students, and I'll, one who's standing right behind me, who will share that they have gained employment due to their internship after. They have employment references, and it introduces them to role models within the workplace. And then, earn credit, like I said. The CDOs pathway, now that this is an opportunity for all students, it used to be just for the special education population, but all students now can have the four-plus CDOs pathway for graduation. So, this helps some of those students acquire who maybe couldn't get that fifth regions. Some of the requirements, the career plan, the employability profile, the CDOs standards, and 216 hours of CTE courses, which would be one and a half credits in business, family, consumer science, and technology right here at the high school, plus the 54 hours of workplace learning. And we've also been registered for the General Education Work Experience Program where the students can get credit for working in their actual job. And we're going to probably start this up a little bit, go more details next year on that one. We have not started that yet. This is the breakdown of how they earn that credit, but 150 hours equals a half a unit of credit, and they can earn up to two credits for their work experience. The required paperwork and monitoring of the students is the same, though, as the internship So, some of the benefits for our mentors and for the business, they get to help guide and assist students as they make very important decisions, complete some projects that they may not have had time to do on their own. So, we've had students be able to step in and get things done for an employer that they maybe have not had time to do. Develop and retain workforce within their organization, helping to create a motivated, educated workforce, and find future employees. So, I'm not going to read all of these, but these are, this is the breakdown for first semesters. We had a variety of career interests, a lot of them inside the school, some of them outside of the school in different places. I have pictures that go with some of these, so I'm going to highlight a few of those. So, the first one I'll highlight was Hannah on the left. She started out with doing accounting department. She rotated through several different departments at the BOSI's central business office for the first semester. And then, second semester, she wanted to learn more about tax accounting. So, she's working at La Griga Brigat's office right now doing that type of accounting. And I won't read everyone, but Jessica at Chautauqua Health and Fitness. Within the school system, Tyler working with Mr. Ball and the students. Diego is working with Dr. Sam Mason at SUNY Fredonia in the Science Department. Alexis with Mrs. Mandanowski's class. She's another student whose first semester wanted to work with younger students. Second semester, now she's working in the middle school with social studies with Mr. Fabiano and Mr. Corral to see what the older students are like. We had Seth in the mayor's office. Andrew Weg has worked all year. He's done a full-year internship in the tech department, doing a lot of things with Mr. Prince and Mr. Rector, just all over the building, doing, putting in numerous hours, and he loves it. Another classroom, Taylor's was a little different. She was helping a fundraiser for the Lake Shore Humane Society. She was given a task to basically work independently, help them create that brochure, help with the fundraising baskets, the auction, online advertising, and social media, and so forth. Then, second semester, we had the 21. Again, I'm not going to read them all, but we had a variety of careers in different interest areas of inside and outside of the school. That was Alexis with the middle school kids. We have Cole working at St. George Enterprise. Devin's currently working with Mr. Ball. Emily is working on the weekends at the Audubon's Nature Center in Jamestown, and she was teaching me all about bird banding. Kindergarten with Kaylee. Isabella works with Mrs. Mandanowski, and she loves it so much, she even goes to their specials with them. So, she went to, into the gym classes with them as well. Nico with the financial advisors, and Valerie working with Mrs. Banjanani's class. And then, I have Yadi right here, so she can maybe share a little bit about what she's been doing.
Hi, my name's Yadi Vasquez, and I'm with the elementary kids with Ms. Bernadette and Ms. Mekes. I help teach kindergarten, fourth graders, and so far, I'm planning to go on JBC for teaching and maybe Fredonia.
Okay. And we have Olivia working with Mrs. Christine Otte, and Jimmy Rush with the guidance department. And we have Hannah Salery. First semester, she worked with Dr. Root, and she's the very last intern that he has since he retired. She was able to do all kinds of things there. And now, this semester, she's working in middle school math with Mrs. Snyder. And then, we have Owen right here, so I'll let Owen.
Hello, Owen Nigazia. First semester, I was able to intern with Dr. Newberg, who is a newly chiropractor, I guess you could say. He was just, he took over Dr. Root's practice. I learned a ton with him. He really showed me the ropes as being a chiropractor, and I really loved it because I've never liked taking medicine. I've always tried to not take it, and I love the idea of just a more holistic way of treating patients with your hands, you know, different techniques. And so, I definitely enjoyed that. I plan on pursuing the profession and attending SUNY Fredonia in the fall as an exercise science major. So, I definitely enjoyed it, and I learned a ton. And now, I'm actually at Chautauqua Fitness with a head trainer, Greg Kraft. I guess it's kind of related. I just like the idea of being in good physical health and all-around good health. So, I thought this was kind of related, and maybe it's maybe something I'd like to do down the road. Practiced care doesn't really work out, so.
And then, he was one of them he did get hired by.
Oh, yeah. So, I actually do work there now, twice a week. So, it worked out in my favor.
Okay. And then, we also have Marissa.
Hi, I'm Marissa Ver. I'm a junior. This is my first internship, and so I work with Ms. Kaminski in the kindergarten, and I do lots of things, like helping the kids with their catch-up work, and I pick them up from the gym, and they love, and I play with them outside. And we do a lot of painting, as you can see by my hands. And it really helped me realize that this is what I want to do with my life. I love this age group, and some people think it might be overwhelming, and my first day it was, but after that, I just learned to love the kids and loved learning from Ms. Kaminski. And next year, I plan to do a special education internship somewhere in the school so I can teach both special education students and regular kindergarten students. This really was the best class for me that actually had something to do with the career that I wanted to go into.
So, if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact me by email at any point. If you know anybody that is looking for an intern or you want an intern yourself, contact me. Or if you have a child that might want an internship, feel free to contact me. And like I said, for future, we're expanding with the general ed work experience. From what I understand, we already have about 40 students next year registered for internship programs. So, we're all, we're trying to work with guidance to have all students of all abilities be able to gain some experience before leaving high school.
Board members, if any, questions?
Just one question. Is there an actual classroom component that goes along with the internship, or is all of this work completed outside the normal kind of classroom situation?
Well, they're scheduled in for their 10th period class. So, I meet with students when they're free and when I'm free to do different things, but most of this stuff would be done independently, turned in online, and so forth with the classroom, for the classroom component. Okay.
So, what is greater, the number of students looking for internships or the number of businesses looking for interns?
Right now, it's been about even. I have never had, I've never had to say no to either. The only I've had to say no to is students who I can't find a specific placement for a specific job that they want. But if they're willing to try something else, we usually find a placement for them. What is lacking, though, right now, I think, is the health. What is lacking though right now, I think, is the health-related careers. Hospital used to take kids, now they, since this year, they have not taken any students. They did say they might start taking them again in the future once their merger and so forth has been completed, but, so that's difficult sometimes.
Any other questions? Mr. DePew, in terms of transportation, is that, how's that handled? Is it an issue at all?
It hasn't been. Students are responsible for their own transportation, and that's, you know, told to them before they even commit to doing their internship.
And like, how far afield have students gone? I'm just imagining, is it all within the Fredonia Dunkirk or, does anyone?
For the most part, Jamestown for the Audubon Society this year, and then I did have a student in Westfield at 21 Bricks actually last year. I'm learning how to make wine, so that was probably the two furthest.
And just for any of the students, in terms of your studies to this point, are there any particular subjects that you've taken that you've found especially helpful in terms of what you're doing now?
Definitely this was the most helpful, but other than that, for being a kindergarten teacher, child psychology with Mrs. Hans was very helpful in learning why the kids do what they do and how they act and how we can react to that.
And, yeah.
I'll think too specific towards me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess you would say.
It's great. Mr. Struttisio?
Thank, Mr. DePew, thank you for your efforts in this program. Fantastic, I'm really excited that it's expanding. One of the question I had was already asked, and what areas are you lacking? I knew the medical side of things, because I gave the change at the hospital, and I've been advocating for that, so hopefully we'll see some movement in that area. But if there's other requests that you don't know how to fulfill, let's try and work together and maybe we can brainstorm on how to help these young people. I love the fact that they're doing things and they're using their skills in developing their soft skills and making real-world connections that are going to benefit them and the community.
Great. Thank you. Okay, and then that takes us to Roman numeral five. We had minutes, Ms. Legel was kind enough to send those out from our special board meeting of April 16 and our regular board meeting of April 30. Could we bring those to the floor for consideration? Ms. Gagenchanson, a second by Ms. Paul Fortna, and any additions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? Excellent. So that takes us to Roman numeral six, Financial Treasuries Report. We have contract with outside agencies, and this is the renewal of Management Advisory Group regarding stack and Medicaid forms, and could we bring that to the floor for consideration? Mr. Hawk, and is there a second to that?
A second.
Second by Mr. Forrester. Any comments, questions, Mr. Forbes, anything?
Just to note, it's not listed in the motion itself, it's a 2% change from current.
Are we going to go about this monthly or an annual process? Because it says or here.
I would prefer to do it as the annual, but the board will just do it the other way.
Is there any additional cost to do it monthly? Is there a benefit to pay ahead? Is there a discount?
We don't pay ahead, I mean, we don't, and we won't reduce it, we pay by the month as we go, plus the annual fee, and they divide it by 12, so we're not, we're not giving them $10,000 upfront.
Okay. So the difference is, do we pay a bill monthly or we pay the bill in full?
No, we don't pay the full.
Pay it monthly.
I think that was the concern, was that, if we're paying it front or not.
Cool. Okay, any other questions regarding that? Excellent. Then all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? Excellent. Oh, and I'm sorry, Mr. Forbes, you did mention in your presentation that there was a change to the Medicaid reimbursement, $60,000 to $90,000?
Yeah, what I did is I just bumped up, I took my conservative number and made it a little less conservative and it's more reflective of what we've been seeing coming in through the assistance of band advisor.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Then we have requests for the purchase of replacement pool cleaner, health and safety reasons, cost not to exceed $3,500. Can we bring that to the floor for consideration? So Mr. Jambrone, and is there a second to that?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's Mr. Aldrich. And any questions or comments regarding that at all? Is this the, I'm sorry.
Is this something that we can use our capital reserve on?
No, it isn't.
It's not conservative, capital is just project, we made sure this is just regular.
Even though it has a life of?
Even though it has a life of.
20 years.
And I should point out that also that we didn't have any money budget specifically for this. New York State regulations are that you can't transfer into or out of equipment, so therefore you need to do a motion for health and safety to buy equipment that's not already budgeted for, and obviously to keep the pool clean, it comes up, the health and safety issue. The pool bug itself, we've already run through the whole gamut of parts and so forth in previous years, and it is now dead, so.
This is the same bug that we rebuilt last year, with spare parts.
Probably the year before that.
That was my question.
There's no.
I missed the life of this one. Okay. Excellent. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? It's approved, and we have the Audit Committee minutes. Could we bring those to the floor? Two meetings, March 21, April 5. So, Mr. Hawk, and is there a second to that? Ms. Paul Fortna? Excellent, sorry, just changing. And any questions, comments? I'll thank the Audit Committee again. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? That's approved, and we've gotten through everything to the point of, the board has reserved this time to hear comments from the audience. Those wishing to address the board are asked to stand, give their name and address, limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual or group. Audience members seeking a response?